6:30, we'll call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Husnik.
Here.
Councilmember Monson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
And Mayor Bane.
Here.
And if you're able, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and that your republic will always stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have an open forum this evening. And, Dan, has there anybody signed up? As a point of clarification, the original agenda that was sent out did not have an open forum, and I believe it's still our intent to have open forum at all meetings, whether they are all non-special meetings, so all workshops and all council meetings. So, we are happy to entertain resident input whenever we can get it. And first up, we have Eric Langness. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Eric Langness, 9610 to 23rd Street, North Forest Lake. So regarding the refuse and recycling RFP, I want to applaud you for going out and not blindly just extending a contract with a company that I know many in our community have frustrations with. So I thank you for that first. When I looked at the RFP, I wanted to note that there was a number of things where we might see them as somewhat appealing, like these freebies for parks and city buildings and public works and different events. And I want you to think about what happens. So when a company decides to bid, they're going to bid assuming that they have to bear that cost upon everybody else that takes the service. And what you're in effect doing is subsidizing the parks, city hall, public works, these events with the cost on those residents that were forcing to do this, and we're not charging the residents that live in apartments of five or greater or the businesses that don't fall under the RFP. And so I would encourage you, while it may seem beneficial to you, I think that ultimately is not fair to those residents. But in a second piece, I think, and I'm not sure if it creates an audit issue, but it certainly hides a real true cost of government by having that pushed in the RFP versus actually taking that and paying for it as a city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Karen Moorhead. Welcome.
Thank you very much. We'd all like to be out finishing our gardening, but this is important. My name is Karen Moorhead, 943 Southeast 12th Avenue, Forest Lake. And I'm here tonight on the same issue. I've lived in this community for 50 years, and I've seen a lot of changes. But it was amazing to me, when I thought back, that one thing has never changed. It was even here before me. So I did pass out to you a copy of the Progress Edition. And if you can see, SRC, 55 years. That's pretty amazing to me. And it then cemented the reason why I am so loyal to that company. I used to do daycare at my home, and that company, their truck would come up, and you know how the kids love to see it. They came up at a little later date at that time. The kids would love to see the big truck, and they would always take time to say hello, play ball with them if there was a little something. It was almost like a family feeling with them. Later on, I joined Rotary and met Cam and Marge during the Rotary years. They were there again before me. But whenever there was an issue that came up where we had an event, we knew that we could just count on them to take care of us with all of the trash containers that we need, both to drop them off and pick them up, and never a charge. And even better than that was a couple of meetings that I sat through during the Christmas time. And Rotary always adopts a family. And, as you can imagine, a lot of people contribute, but it's not always enough. And so oftentimes, bless his soul, he's passed on, I would see Cam very quietly reach into his pocket and bring out a $100 bill and say, "Here, make it due." That doesn't get out in the newspaper, and people don't know it. But it's there. And I've seen it time and time again, how many times, because they were members of a Rotary club, how they were entrined with, entailed with the city. Anyway, they were always busy with city business because they cared about it. They were here to do a job more than pick up trash. And I appreciate that. The other thing, I agree with one thing with Mr. Langness said, which always surprises me, but that's good, about all those freebies, because I just think that's the city's obligation. And while they do some of that already, I wouldn't like to see that as far as the RFP, that they would have to do that. And it does take away, he explained it much better than I could. But I disagree with him wholeheartedly, that there are residents that are disappointed with the service or with the people. Lately, there has been some things drugged up, and it's easy to get people to come forward with things that might have not gone right with them. But I wish you could have a listing for the 55 years of how many complaints you might have seen. I have a lot of friends my age, and so I've been doing a lot of asking them. They also have had the trash company for all those years. And they say, "Well, no, never had any kind of problem." Well, there's some billing things, and I know the company has addressed them just recently. But as far as an RFP, I think that's good, because we have to be responsible to our community. We have to find out what's out there. So I, again, keep track of a lot of things at my home, lots of things that I don't need. But I was able to go back and look at the bills that I've been getting. And I didn't get to make a copy for everybody because I ran out of ink. But in 1997, my bill was 3732. In 1999, my bill was 3732. In 2000, my bill was 3732. 2001, it went up, 3951. And in 2002, 3951. In 2016, 38. And in 2018, 47. And I know, we all know that some of the charges that were in there. But when you think about it, even with the charges from '97 to '18, I don't think they've been gouging us. I think they've been giving us a very good service. And it's a very, very good local community. 55 years of loyalty. I can't put any money value on that type of loyalty. So as far as shopping local and believing in our local businesses, I just wanted to come forward and say, "Do a fair RFP and take in some of these other situations that you're never going to get from an outside group." It's just the way it is. It's when we were talked about privatizing the city buses. They can come in with a very low quote, sounds very good, and we should take it. However, when we get rid of our buses, we don't have anything to go back on. The next time they come out, it can be quite different. So all of the above, I just hope that you give it a lot of care. If you want, I can get lots of petitions from people who are happy. And I think you'll far outnumber the ones that recently have come up with some sort of a problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next up, Marge Strand. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. In going through this RFP, I would like to point out some things to you and ask you if you really, really want to have them in the RFP. And Mr. Langness brought up a good point, and Karen as well, that rolling the city wants into the program is not fair to all of the residents. It puts the burden of paying for the city garbage and recycling on the onus of the property owners, residents, who are paying taxes, and also your voters. Are you sure that you want to have a quote from me from portable toilets? You have an existing contract with On-Site Sanitation through February of 2020, and that has never been an issue that we have bid before. But are you sure you want to include that in the RFP? Also, four years ago, when we were bidding this contract, it became a boondoggle that you weren't asking other companies to bid what the Forest Lake residents have right now for size of containers. We offer a 40-gallon container, not a 30. We offer a 65-gallon container, not a 60. And a 96-gallon container, not a 90-gallon. And I would hope that you would ask other companies to compete equally with what the residents have right now. Is it really necessary? Do you really, are you sure you want to put it in the RFP to get weights on everything? We give you weights from what we take down to the transfer stations and the recycle centers. It's really burdensome to get a weight on every truck every day. Are you sure it's necessary or gaining anything for that? You make no provision in this RFP for a fuel surcharge. And the 20 cents a gallon that the state was talking about at this last session could put a real hardship on any company. And I think there should be some provision for increased prices based on reality. You've offered, you've asked for a valet service. We have some driveways that are a quarter of a mile long. I don't think it's a practical application for this RFP. Are you sure you need that as part of the, as part of the quote? You've asked for a collection day cleanup, a spring cleanup one day for bulky items. That could be a real boondoggle. We have 36 square miles of this township city to cover. We offer right now a one-week at disposal, self-disposal, for 20% discount up at SRC for the residents to bring their garbage and their trash and their bulky items. And this could just really be a boondoggle to have everybody put everything curbside. You have another issue on here about delinquent accounts. And I want you to think about this really long and strong. The residential account is deemed to be delinquent. The contractor may switch the refuse container to the smallest container offered by the contractor. However, the contractor may not suspend refuse and/or recycling services to the delinquent account. That's absurd. If I have an overdue bill at any retail store, anywhere in Forest Lake, I can't go in there and expect to walk out of there with a product. Why would you ask any contractor to take garbage for free? That just, that just doesn't make sense at all to me. Another provision on your road restrictions. Every garbage truck in the state of Minnesota, probably in the United States, is overweight when it's empty. That's just a fact. That's the way they're built. Your snowplows, your dump trucks, your gravel trucks, everything on your road is overweight, empty. So in the springtime, when the road restrictions are on, Forest Lake Sanitation has the best opportunity to take small loads back to our transfer station. But otherwise, they're running overweight all the time. I would like to continue to be your garbage provider and recycling service. I would like to know what your plan is for the period between August 3 and January 1. Since my contract ends the 30th of August, and you're proposing that this one doesn't start until January 1, what is your plan? Do you have any questions? I thank you.
And Richard Proll.
I took up his time.
Oh, anything, Dan? Okay, thank you. Okay, well, first item on our agenda tonight is the refuse and recycling RFP. Patrick, I think you're going to lead us through this.
Sure. In front of you is the RFP. You'll notice the yellow highlights, and some of those are some of the things that we still need to adjust, like the dates and the starting contract dates. That's why they're highlighted in yellow. Basically, the contract, I should say, the RFP lays out what we believe to be an appropriate service level for the city and what we believe is a responsibility for the vendor to look at. We're hoping that it will attract a number of different bids that we can consider and find a contractor, whether it be the current contractor or someone else, to continue the level of service that we, our residents, are expecting in the RFP. I'm not sure if you want me to go through this paragraph by paragraph, or you'd rather just ask me, ask questions and clarifications, but I'll wait to see what that's, what you want to do here.
I think what might be helpful would be to walk through, to start with, key differences of what's being requested in the RFP from what's in our existing contract. If we could just highlight some of those key changes, I think that'd be a good place to start, just to get everyone on the same page, and then we can go with questions.
Yeah, I mean, the key differences, besides what, I mean, Marge correctly pointed out a few of them. The garbage carts, you know, we put what we believe were the standard carts. Those, that can change if somebody proposes a 96-gallon or a 92-gallon or a 90. It's still a 90-gallon cart. We can obviously in there have a bid on, include whatever they believe the cart size should be. As far as the spring cleanup goes, I think that's a good idea. I've seen that in other contracts and other RFPs that I have done, where a spring cleanup, you can have the residents put out garbage that, so it doesn't land up in their yards, doesn't land up in the side of the road somewhere. I mean, it's really more of an encouragement to try to keep the city as clean as possible, because residents sometimes have a tendency to fly-dump in the middle of the night or on a weekend or something, and it ends up on the roadside, and then we have to pick it up anyway. So that's, that's the intent there. The delinquent account is similar to that. Yeah, I was concerned with cutting off garbage collection to a home. Now, hopefully, that doesn't happen very often. But if we totally cut off garbage collection, again, some of those things may end up in places we don't want them to end up. That's why that's in there. And as far as the services to the city, where we are asking for pickup at the parks and pickup at the city buildings, that's a pretty common occurrence in a lot of different contracts, not only here, but in places I have been, where you don't charge the city that, or the town or the village, for garbage collection. What we're doing here is giving a monopoly, basically, to one company. And we're giving them a franchise. And I believe that the city should benefit as much as possible at that franchise, and we should, they should be providing some of those services. That's, that's part of the major differences that I see. Other than that, there's, there's very few differences. I know that, you know, every other day recycling, every other week recycling, weekly recycling, the valet service. You know, I know we have some people who probably can't wheel their garbage cans out. And it would be a nice service to be able to get some of those people's garbage without having to have them struggle to do it. Again, that's something I've been familiar with in the past and have in other contracts that I've put in place. So that's where the valet service comes from. Other than that, you know, we, annual reports. We need a lot of the information for the annual report for some of the recycling grant, the recycling grant we get. You know, it's a large dollar amount. I forget what the cost of that is. We got $30,000 or $35,000, something like that. So they require some reporting on our part to give us those, that fund. So that's why we're asking for the reporting. Public education should be a no-brainer. We need to educate the public on how their garbage is picked up, when it's picked up, how they can call for special pickups and so forth. Sure, there's some of the things in here that may not be something that you want us to do, and that's fine. That's why we're here. You know, we put in a fall curbside leaf collection. That may be over generous on our part, trying to do something like that. But as far, a Christmas tree collection, we should, I mean, we should be collecting the Christmas trees. Again, we, I've experienced that in the past. So that's really, the only real different things in the service levels than we're looking at is some of those extras that we're talking about, so.
Open up for questions, feedback from council. I would say, anyone who wants to jump in, go ahead. I suspect we're all going to be.
Before I go, other, I also pass out to you. I had a question before tonight about organic waste collection. And if, I've just kind of drafted a little paragraph on if we wanted to look at that or not. We, organic waste collection is something that's, that seems to be some of interest in different parts, and others, no. But it's basically kitchen scraps and things like that that are put in an individual container to recycle in that manner, so. But I just thought I'd give you a draft, the possibility of that, even though it's not in the RFP. And as far, as far as the dates, I'm sorry, the dates, again, were just based on, I plugged them in to just put a date in there so that I know, go back to change them. I mean, that's particularly, it may not be January 1. It could be August 1. But I needed to throw something in there before we had the discussion, so I wouldn't forget to change it down the road here.
This organic waste thing, I mean, you'd have to really describe exactly what that is, because it just sounds like garbage to me. You're already.
Some people think that, yeah.
Yeah, well, it is. And, and so are we going to come up with some sort of a stinky mess by doing something like that? You know, I can see where it could be watermelon rinds or something like that. But the problem is, that's going to, there would be a tight control on that.
Yeah, and what, what happens in a lot of places is when they do organic waste, there's a separate trash bin for that, that is a real small one. I don't know the size of it, but it's labeled organic waste, and you put your kitchen scraps and your watermelon rinds and whatever else in there to have them recycle it. That's, I know there's a few places that are doing that. It's not quite a standard across the state, obviously, but there's, there's interest in different parts of the state that, to do that.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, you know, those, I guess, that I would consider kind of part of my constituency have requested that as a potential option. They're currently hauling their organic waste down to Washington County. So it would be nice to kind of understand the, the level of demand, you know, for that, that service, kind of before diving in headfirst, I guess. And I'm not sure how we can assess that, but.
And I don't know if we can assess that right away, but I think we can, if we put it in the RFP and ask the bidders to comment on that and see, A, if it's possible, and then what the cost might be. You know, we could establish a minimal level of participation, 200, 500, 1,000, before it may kick into place. And according to this little write-up, we won't even begin it till 2021, if the council wants something different, that's so that it will give us an opportunity to, and to research a little more, and then talk to whoever the vendor is going to be and how we can implement something like that, so.
It'd be a separate price, separate bid.
Yes, it would be.
I'm trying to understand, kind of precisely, what we're asking for. We speak very generally on page two in the first paragraph, "City Goals and Objectives of This RFP."
Sure.
That we recognize there are many collection methods, new technologies, and facilities available today for separated residential organic materials. Interested in seeing what services are proposed through the RFP. But then we go on a little bit later in the contract, and it feels like the scope is a little narrower.
Yeah.
You know, we had had some conversation about single stream, dual stream, you know, those sorts of things. And I think, you know, we landed at wanting to try to kind of assess, you know, a variety of options. So I'm just, you know, how open-ended is this in terms of, you know, what it is that we're trying to assess and, you know, be able to compare from provider to provider?
Yeah, I think we can, let me say that there have been innovations in garbage in the past. I don't know if there's any recent ones. I mean, the cans themselves and the automatic tip-up trucks and things like that. I don't know if there's anything new that a vendor could come up with that we don't know of already. But I think we maybe, should be able to expand and talk about a single stream and dual stream recycling and things like that. But I think each vendor may have a different way to do that and may not do it, depending on what the vendor is. And I think so probably we need to ask probably a little more clearly that question is, please, in your response, talk about single stream, dual stream, and how you would handle that. You know, the organic thing in page two, actually, it was, organic was in there to begin with, and I took it out, and that's, I must not have missed that part. But so, because I didn't think we were quite ready for organic, to be quite honest with you. But, yeah, I think we can ask the vendor to comment on what their collection, I mean, what they can do and what they can't do, and what they think about a single stream recycling, dual, whatever the case may be, and have them try to explain that. And how that is calculated into their pricing. I mean, it's going to be a very, I mean, there's going to be nuances in all the bids, I'm sure, on this kind of a contract. It's not just, you know, how much per cubic yard of cement. It's, it's a little bit different on how they may collect it or what the schedule may be. And, you know, one may have, in the past, one, I've had one vendor that said weekly recycling and another that said bi-weekly, and the price was different. So how did you decide which way to go and compare that to what service levels there are? So we'll have some nuances that we'll have to work through when we get the responses.
I think some of those decisions have to be made on where and tearing the roads. I mean, that's a consideration. There's no question about it. And that's one of the reasons with, you know, you want a single provider. That, so, I know that the term has been used, you know, that it's not necessarily a good thing, but it is because, just because of where and tearing the roads when you're talking about trucks that are really extremely heavy and that kind of thing. You don't want five different vendors out there. So the term monopoly, good or bad, or how you feel about it, you still have some control over it because of the fact that, you know, these things come up about every five years. I do agree with the comments that were made here today about the city asking for all these freebies. It just doesn't seem right to me that, that that's the way it should be. And, you know, there's no free lunch. And I, you know, I don't want it to sound like, you know, that, "Yeah, you got to give us these freebies or else," kind of thing, you know? And, but I don't want it to sound that way.
I understand.
That's just me. And so the, I have issues with a couple of different things. I can take them one at a time, or.
Yeah, let's take them one at a time.
The fall curbside pickup, I mean, if we're going to do something like that, I don't know where we, where we should be putting that burden totally on the vendor on a particular case like that. If it's something that the city is really feeling passionate about, I don't see why they should be picking up a tab on it.
And the spring cleanup?
Well, the fall curbside pickup.
Okay, yeah, no, no, that's fine.
The spring cleanup also. I mean, there's, there's been lots of cases where these folks have done things for free, but it was on their own terms, you know, that kind of thing. The Christmas trees, I don't, I don't understand what's. Yeah, well, okay, so if that's not an issue with asking for the RFP, we can let that go. But the fuel surcharge, I understand not charging a fuel surcharge, okay? Unless something really happens with cost of fuel along the way. It's a five-year contract, and diesel fuel or any kind of petroleum product is the most volatile thing in any kind of a contract that involves trucking. And I think you almost have to have something in there that can kind of protect the vendor in a case like that. You know, judging by, the city would certainly know what that increase is, for whatever reason. New taxes are not available, or some problem with the Middle East, or whatever the case may be. But sometimes those, those costs are pretty hard to absorb. And one of the reasons I know that is back when diesel fuel was almost $5 a gallon, the concrete loads that we were getting, there was certain. And one of the reasons I know that is, back when diesel fuel was almost five dollars a gallon, the concrete loads that we were getting, there was surcharges on just for the fuel. It might have been four or five dollars a load, but at least they were recovering their costs on that fuel.
Yeah, the, the only difficulty is determining what that benchmark is and where does that kick in.
Yeah, right.
Figure out where, you know, is it fifty percent increase in, in fuel prices? Is it, you know, whatever the case may be, we have to figure out what that standard, what that, that jump point is.
And I think, and I think the cutoff point, whoever bids on it, the bidding partners would be able to kind of tell you where that cutoff point is, you know? Also, the valet or walk-up service, boy, that seems like, um, an awful lot to ask. I understand that folks have trouble, you know, they may have some issues and they can't really, can't walk real well or whatever. But at the same time, you're asking a driver to, to stop in the middle of the road or whatever it takes to, to do that. And maybe dragging it through snow or whatever the case may be. So I'd like to have that at least explored or talked about and explained a little bit. And my only problem, I think organic waste, you know, recycling is the greatest idea there is. But we don't want to get into a situation where all of a sudden we're deciding to put garbage out there where it's gonna be a health issue. And, and then how does it recycle? Is it just put in with the leaves and that kind of thing, or whatever? And I, and I, this has to be some, from my mind, some explanations on, on doing it the right way, so. Those are a couple of things that I had problems with, so.
Can I, maybe, I want to chime in on a couple of things that you've mentioned. I just want to be clear that when we're talking about built-in services, so like that, so a valet service, I'm assuming that would be a, an additional fee? That we're asking, we're asking all bidders to provide that service at a fee for whoever wanted that service. I wouldn't expect that to be built into anybody, or else we're gonna find nobody wanting to bring the trash out. However, I would, I would think that there's a certain fee or a tipping point where people would pay for it that is compensating the provider for that service. And then some of the other services that we've talked about, I want to be clear, we're not expecting any provider to absorb those things. We're, we're, I would be expecting the providers to build those into their fee structure. So that they are able to cover a spring cleanup day or fall leaf day or whatever, like, that is built into the service. Which may mean a price increase from where we are today, but I just wanted to be clear that we're not asking.
Yeah, the money's gotta come from somewhere.
Costs, that, build it into that base service so that it is provided. And we may end up in a subscription model where you have certain residents that want to participate in those things. They want to pay a higher price point per month to cover that, and others who might just want kind of the basic cable package, if you will, which would be, you know, more standard services.
Yeah, and the valet service is stated as an extra charge, a subscription service, so.
I just wanted to be clear that, I don't, I just don't think there's an expectation that we're expecting those things to be covered for free.
And potentially some parameters around that valet service, too. I mean, I, I would like to see, I tend to agree with many of the individuals here as well, that nothing is free. And I would really like to see the scope of service, the requested scope of service, with attached dollars, you know, to each of those. So for instance, you know, what would that spring cleanup be? I mean, I, I.
Oh, I see.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So if we can kind of, I, I would like to see itemization, I guess, is what I'm saying, of, of each of those services that we're requesting, if they have them. As a, a carrier or organization. So that, you know, we're fully transparent when it comes time to saying, this is what we're, you know, proposing we do as a council. And this is what it's going to cost, that somebody can take a look at those figures and know exactly where that dollar amount is coming from. So just, just for kind of full transparency purposes, is what I would like to see.
Patrick?
Do you know how many other cities in Minnesota are doing the composting?
Compost, organic, yard waste? No, I don't. Organic, from whatever thing I've seen, I can't tell you exactly how many, but it's spotty, you know? Some big, like Minneapolis does it and other places, but it's not something that I've seen that it's widespread. It was when we were looking to create, when we created the RFP, it was, it wasn't very common in some of the samples that we looked at. However, on the other hand, picking up all city, city buildings, for example, and parks, for no cost, was very common. I mean, so that was kind of what we saw when we were looking at things.
And I'm wondering if there are, if there's a potential for some of those kind of extra services that are a little more fee-based? If we're, you know, the valet is an extra cost, potentially.
Yes.
The organics could be as well.
Yes, I think the organics down, would definitely be a, a cost.
Okay.
I mean, there's no doubt that, that it probably won't pay for itself. You have a truck running up and down everyone. And if it's a subscription, they have to go hit or miss, depending on block by block. So, you know, I would anticipate the organic would definitely be a subscription service.
You know, getting, getting back to the fall curbside pickup, just for one quick thing, or is that, either way, the residents would pay for it, one way or the other. And that cost has to be built into that. And I just, I, I don't know why. We wouldn't be deciding who, to fit that into our budget or somehow, so that, you know? Because that way, then everybody's taken care of and everybody has, has a hand in it, you know, especially if you're living in an apartment or whatever the case may be. Instead of putting it all on just the folks that have curbs, or the pickup, so. I, I certainly want to take a long, hard look at that.
Are you talking, Councilmember Husnick, about the leaf collection day? The fall leaf collection day?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
One of the freebies, you know, that, that where nothing is free.
Yeah, so not the spring, that includes the mattresses and.
That.
Furniture and all of those sorts of things?
I think, I think the, the folks that have the, when you're talking about that particular thing, I think the folks that have that stuff. In particular upholstered furniture or whatever, I think they should be paying that for, for themselves, I really do.
Yeah, and bulk collection is, is normally a subscription service on a break, monthly basis, so. Again, these are suggestions, they don't, you know, you want to take them out or you want to leave them, that's okay.
I like the idea of the valet. I just think of some of our older residents who aren't able to bring it out in the snow. I think also, we, I have one of those driveways that is very, very long. And so having maybe some parameters around that would maybe be helpful for the hauler. But I just, I think of just the ice and the snow and, and some of my neighbors that need just a little extra help.
Yep, I would agree with that.
Obviously paying extra for that service, but.
Yeah, as long as they're willing to pay for that service.
Absolutely.
When we talk about the leaf cleanup in the fall, there's also a subscription for the green containers.
Yard waste containers.
The yard containers. And so you have some people who would be paying for yard containers all year. And then come fall, they get free leaf cleanup. I think that if you're gonna have yard containers some of the months, their leaves cleaned up. Why I'm on the bandwagon for like your yard, uh, leaf containers. I noticed that in your RFP, you say how much for a garbage can, what side, boom, boom, boom.
Yeah.
I know on the green containers, you can get one container, two containers, and there's a fee structure. I think we ought to add that in there for that also, those who, those who live on the lake can generate a lot of weeds. So needing a couple of containers for July and August goes a long way. My two cents on delinquent accounts is that I think they ought to be able to stop people who aren't paying. Having been delinquent once, it was very reassuring to know that as soon as I gave them my credit card number, they'd be out the next week to pick it up. So it was a very effective, have a garbage can remain full at the end of the driveway, you know? Other than that, I, I think there's a couple of freebies, like everybody else said, I, I think that, that's more of a city cost. And we're gonna, we pay for it one way or another, but I think it should be a little more black and white as far as how that goes.
So what I would need, a little bit direction of exactly what you want me to continue to be in here, like the fall leaf collection or the valet service? Or what freebies we may want or not want? I mean, there's concern about those, but I need a little bit more kind of a.
Get some consensus?
Consensus here to figure out what we want to do. I would, again, I recommend, at least if you're talking about the freebies, and all that's good and fine. But again, I think it's more of a practice in a lot of communities that the garbage hauler picks up at city parks and city buildings. That's how it is. Not in all, obviously, but in many. And I'm sure maybe Dave's more familiar with that than I am, but I know that's for a fact, that that's often in, in garbage collection contracts. The other ones, you know, you can decide what you want or not.
So maybe let's take those, maybe let's take a couple of those things individually and just do a quick kind of nod of heads of whether it should be in the RFP or out of the RFP. First being a spring cleanup day, interest in having that in RFP, should we remove it?
I say remove it.
Paul says remove it.
I'd like to see it in.
See it in.
I'd just like to see what it looks like, you know, on paper.
See what, see what it would cost, yeah. We have a number of code enforcement challenges. Your one of that cleanup day might be ugly. And it might be something that we have to ease into and let's, and talk about, you know, how much, setting expectations? Or maybe setting some limits around the cleanup day of, you know, this isn't the day to haul the five refrigerators that are in your basement up, out onto the street. But if you could set some parameters around that day, I think, I'd like to see the pricing for it. Personally, to evaluate whether that's something, I, and I suspect that one of the reasons we have some of those code enforcement challenges is we just don't have those days that make something easy, people are more likely to participate and narrow it to one day.
What comes to mind is when Washington County has or has, hazardous waste. If you get there right at eight o'clock, there's, it is hard to believe any one household can generate that much hazmat. You go a little later in the day, fits in a trunk and they're done in and out in two seconds. So I, I'm not sure that, you got apples and apples when there's a spring cleanup and how far away can people bring stuff and, you know?
And I think that comes down to the definition, you know, what are those parameters? What can go out on that curb, right? Maybe it isn't hazardous waste.
Oh, it shouldn't be hazardous waste.
No, that's the county where you don't, can someone put three beds out and two couches? And the next guy puts a, two folding chairs up, you know, it just, I don't know, SRC's not that far to go dump it.
If you have a truck, someone, right, if you have a means to get it there. There are some communities that have a period of time, once those materials are out on the curbside, for other residents to come and pick them up for upcycling purposes, recycling and upcycling purposes. And that does happen in some communities. And then there's a cutoff point and whatever's left ends up getting picked up.
And cleanup days is like a city event where one day it's, it's upcycling and the next day it's cleanup.
Yep.
So let's circle back, let's circle back on that topic, maybe, fall, fall leaf day. I think Councilmember Gerard makes a great point around, we already do have the Green Hopper subscription service for those who are interested. I think that that should be part of the service, that's part of the RFP. Doing a cleanup day on top of that feels a bit, like it could be very generous. I'd like to split the difference on do the spring cleanup day and pull off the fall leaf day, but that's just my thought.
I guess my only question would be, and maybe this is for Dave, I mean, would that alleviate some raking out into the street and getting into our system?
Yeah, I mean, it would help some in the urban areas, people rake their leaves up. You know, the, the rural, rural people will bring it to the compost site because they just have the massive, massive amounts. They did curbside pickup where, where I live, and they were able to shut their compost site down because nobody went there anymore, so.
How many days, how many days out of the year, how many weekends out of the year do they do curbside?
Unlimited, like, from.
It's just built in?
April first till Christmas or whenever the, the snow falls, it's whatever you want to put out. We don't even have yard waste containers, it's just brown paper bags, whatever you put out there, they pick up.
And that's built into your standard rate, continuous?
And then also for like the spring cleanup, they, they offer, instead of a spring cleanup, they offer two appliances per year for free. So you call them and say, I have refrigerator, and he picked up, they'll come by and pick it up. The first two are free, and then after that, there's a, there's an amount that you can pay. So I mean, that's, that's also an option, instead of having a set day, you know, some people use it, some people don't. But, you know, the first two are, are complimentary.
So the vendor's picking it up, is that what you're saying?
What was it?
The contractor's the one that picks it up for, for free?
Yep, so you just basically give them a call, then they'll get it within like two to three business days. Then they'll come around with like a step van and they'll pick up, you know, washers, dryers, refrigerators, mattresses, anything oversized that you have nowhere else to put it.
That seems kind of fair. It seems kind of fair.
Seems kind of fair.
Couple items.
Couple items for household, that's the parameters. So spring or cleanup with some parameters and we can define what those parameters are as we go?
Then you're not limited to spring either. I mean, you don't know when your refrigerator is gonna fail. It could be in the spring, it could be in July, it could be in November. So you, you kind of give yourself your room or when you move or, you know, it's kind of gives you an option that you don't have to have it, you know, on a date in the springtime. It can be anytime during the year.
Yeah, and you just say basically, two bulk items per year are free and the rest, then you could charge for. And those bulk items, you could say refrigerators, mattresses, dryers, washers, and kind of operationally define those a little bit more.
I believe we have a rate, I, I don't remember offhand, but I think they say refrigerators, you know, after the first two, then it's refrigerators as much, mattresses as much. Washers, I mean, they kind of have it spelled out, so you can choose for yourself, if you want it picked up, someone to come and grab it, or if you want to bring it somewhere. And if there's a cheaper way for you to bring it somewhere else, too, you could do that option after your first two.
I mean, the benefit of some of that to me is, you know, not everybody has a pickup truck they can throw something into, right? So, you know, they have a, an appliance that isn't functioning anymore and they don't have a way to haul it, where does it go? Sits out in the yard, probably.
You know, also, I guess, we're at the very, we're at the shopping stage, right? So I'm interested in seeing what the, how the pricing comes back. Just because we request pricing for each item doesn't mean that we need to include that into a final contract.
Agree.
I think it's helpful to get some variation and, you know, let some different service providers shine with what they do.
Yeah, so, so, so it sounds like so far we've got the spring cleanup with some modification and, and getting a better pricing and understanding. Seems like the fall pickup is probably out, as from I can anticipate here, from what I've heard, so. Those are the two things so far. I don't know if that's correct or not, but.
I don't know that it hurts to look at it.
I'd like to see the pricing.
Potentially be eliminated later, right, correct?
I'd like to see some pricing on it and include it. And then Councilmember Bystrom's comment was kind of that menu of options, the menu of services. Include it, see pricing, and we can make, make some decisions on pricing.
And then are we going to, in the RFP, say options we are considering would be the spring cleanup and the fall?
I think we ask for pricing on each.
Yes.
Try to operationally define those as best we can and say, okay, what, what will it cost? Either, either the total cost or what that adds to a resident's bill. If it's a general, you know, instead of thirty dollars, will it be thirty dollars and fifty cents? Or is it fifty cents to the bill or what's the total cost, so?
Okay. I just want to make a quick comment about the yard waste collection. We, we've got a couple of those containers. We love the thing, absolutely love it, because it's a no-brainer. You put the stuff in there and, once a week or whatever, it gets picked up. And you don't have to load it into your truck in the back of your car or whatever, and haul it down to recycle. And you can do the leaves a little at a time and all the other thing. And, and to me, it was just, from my point of view, an extremely reasonably priced service, and I think it's great.
Yeah, we have a couple of those, too.
Yeah, and so. Yeah. And so if, you know, you could sell the idea to everybody that's raking leaves, you wouldn't have to have the fall cleanup thing, you know. But, because I think it's a very reasonable method. And anybody that lives in the lake, like Paul and my son, for instance, the weed issue is just constant and never ends. And you got a place to put them, put that stuff in there. And that stuff is heavy. So.
Right. Um, one of the items that is kind of shifting gears from some of the options to one of the base items of the contract is every other week recycling. I've heard some feedback that people would prefer weekly recycling and that the recycling bin is getting more, you know, that's full before the trash.
We can put that in if you wish. That's an option, I mean.
Think we can look at it.
Thoughts on weekly recycling? Is it a need? Anybody hearing other comments on?
I haven't heard any comments on it. The only, every other week, I'm just looking at it from my own personal thing. It's been fine. And the only thing we, I think we need to consider is truck traffic one more time a week.
It does add a truck.
Because right now, you know, we have virtually six pickups in a month. And so maybe the container size might have to change or something like that. Recycling usually isn't a big deal as far as smell and all this other stuff, you know, so. But it's just my comment.
But we could get a price on it for weekly though, right?
Can we ask for pricing on weekly?
Just for those who forget what week is recycling.
Yeah, it's, it's not an issue.
Look at it both ways.
Also, related to recycling, how are we asking, it was unclear to me how we were asking for scope of recycling services or scope of what is provided by recycling.
Meaning what can we pick up and what you can't?
Correct. And I don't, I would like to believe that that is apples to apples against all providers, but I don't think that's the case. And I think we should, for some definition around what is picked up. What do they include in their recycling program? Prohibited items from their recycling program, just so we're clear of what we're contracting? And I didn't see that spelled out anywhere.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't spell out the actual what, what we'll take and what they won't take.
Is that different, city to city, or hauler to hauler? What, is that different from?
I think different vendors have different abilities to process or believe what they can and can't handle. And, you know, I can't say that's a hundred percent sure, but I think there's probably, might be some differences in what they do. I mean, a waste management may do something different than a, than an SRC or somebody others. So I think that asking them basically a list of what they recycle can tell you which one is, I mean, if they're both the same price and one's taken five times more stuff than the other one, then that's a consideration. Whereas if they're taking five times more stuff and it's another fifty, fifty cents to do that, then that's a different consideration. So we, we should ask them, you're correct, we should ask them what the, what the specific recycling options are.
And then I, I can appreciate that the recycling business can change. I think we should have some parameters, maybe not in the RFP stage, but at least in the contracting stage of if that's going to change, what that requires. So if they're, for, for some, if the market collapses in X and they have stopped collecting X, I think that that should be, we should have some ability to approve that or-
I kind of see that as a contract item really, where if-
It is a contract.
If, if the market does collapse and they say they can't take paper anymore, that they have to come back to the city and say, okay, we can't take paper anymore, let's talk about it.
Right. And more of a contract point than an RFP point. But I think with, in the RFP, I think we do want to spell out those items that are included for recycling services.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Other questions?
You know, on a recycling, I'd be fine if it's either weekly or even every other week with a bigger container. So to Sam's point about truck traffic, a larger container would, would probably do it. You know, I know my recycling's smaller than my garbage and I could easily switch them and do fine. Every other week for both of them.
Right.
Yeah. So I'm good either way.
We'll ask them if it's weekly or, or bi-weekly.
I, I tend to agree about that fuel surcharge issue as well. I mean, that concerns me a little bit, you know, that it, it may not be reflected well on, you know, in the context of this RFP. I, I agree with Councilmember Hosnick's comment about the volatility sometimes of the fuel costs. I'm just not sure what we can, you know, if we need to be that rigid or if we-
If you want us to mention, to have the vendor con, comment on fuel surcharges and what that may look like. But I believe that's more of a contractual agreement and language in the contract, but we can say, okay, will you have a fuel surcharge? If yes, what is the model that you use? So, and we can see.
Yeah, for the purpose of the RFP, I think that's reasonable contractually.
Our current contract also allows, so whether it's fuel surcharges or just changes in rate for any reason, I guess it'd be, I'm, I'm interested in, I'm open to there being some triggers. I just want us to have a clear process of what those are. Our current contract has a trigger for tipping fee increases. I know this is getting a little bit down into contracting, but I think the RFP starts to set expectations. So maybe in the RFP, do we want them to list from their perspective typical triggers where they would be asking for a rate change or we could proactively on the other side?
We can ask them similar to the fuel surcharge. I mean, there, that's a model you can use as far as increased in costs, or you can use a model that says that the annual fee, and again, it depends on some of the, what the responses are, that the, you're allowed what the consumer price index for this area is or less every year. So I mean, there's two different ways to, so that you really cut out whether the tipping fees are in there or anything else. You say, okay, the risk is there, you know, if the consumer price index is 2.5%, you're allowed to raise your bill by 2.5% or less depending, so, at the maximum, but you max out, you put a ceiling on the, what they can increase so that you protect your consumers a little bit.
Just trying to see if I had anything else. I think I've covered all my questions.
Other, just flipping through to make sure we've-
Yeah, because there's no mention of, in this proposal, of what we just talked about, the CPI or tipping fees or anything. So I appreciate that being brought up.
Yeah, and the assumption was that when they bid this out, there's, there's a request for price for the, every year for the next five years. And that, maybe some of that might can be considered. But again, that gets to some contractual, you know, negotiations and things like that, so.
I think maybe asking open-ended special circumstances where they would anticipate deviation from contractor.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I just, I want us to be able to go from the RFP phase into the contracting phase with those things fairly identified and otherwise those can, those can be delays in the contracting phase. I just, I had a list of notes here and I just want to make sure we've gone through them. You know, the delinquent accounts, I was, I want to echo a comment Councilmember Gerard made that, and I think Councilmember Hosnick made it as well. I am, I get nervous when we say you can't shut off the service because you just lose a high motivation to pay and that just gets built into everybody's base rate. I, I'm fine with allowing for a shut-off, a shut-off service.
Okay.
I understand the intent.
Yes.
But I, I would agree. I would concur with that.
The other, so one of the items, last time this contract was negotiated, before my time, but I understand that the difference in cart sizes was a challenge or was a topic of conversation. Are we asking for industry standard cart sizes? And I understand we may, we have a provider today that-
We'll have to review that. I believe that those were industry sized, but if there's a difference, we'll find that out. You know, the difference between a ninety and a ninety-six, okay. We'll just have to see what, what they're asking, what, what there are, so.
I would encourage us, whatever we can do to get apples to apples coming back for the evaluation period. Otherwise, every single calculation has to have some-
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll, we'll try to see what the standard cart sizes are.
And I would also, so one more request if we could. A, a summary of billing and collection procedures. It has been a little problematic, current provider, electronic payments cannot, sometimes aren't applied up to ten days to an electronic payment being made. And I'd like to just in the RFP, just clarify billing, collection procedures.
Posting.
And online payment options, what does that look like? We don't have anything in there for online service. We asked about service, but I think we should be requesting some online service, online pay options.
Good point.
And then just a clarification of standard collection procedures.
Sure.
Anything else?
I have nothing.
And any follow-ups for us or anything else we can?
No, not right now. We have, I'll have to go back and do a little work, but that's okay. Get it back to you since we can. We will have to change the, I mean, the contract dates will, the due dates will probably be close to what they are on the cover, but the contract date will reflect the, the date following expiration of our current contract, which may mean if it's a different vendor, they'll have to hustle or figure something out. But that just happens to be the case.
We, do you bring this back to council at a future meeting for us to do a formal blessing? Do you send RFP based on feedback from-
I will, I would like to send it out email, have you look at it and follow-up comments so that we can get it out as soon as possible.
Okay. One request would, just my personal request, is if there's anything substantial that has changed or any substantial feedback items, let's bring it back.
Yeah, I don't anticipate that, but I think that if there is something that we find out, that's, that's not a problem.
Perfect. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
We gotta have time to review it for sure.
Good discussion, everybody. And our next item, strategic planning update. Patrick, I think you're moving on to this one as well?
Yeah, at the last workshop, I believe, you asked me to go back and contact the two strategic plan proposals that were submitted to the city, address them differently, what you felt each one was either lacking or you wanted to change. I did so and then forwarded you the responses from Portage Partners, their update, and from whatever his name is, I forget his name, Big River I should say, what his email response to us was. So really at this point, it's up to us to decide, up to you to decide where you want to go with this. I will say that I don't think they changed dramatically, to be quite honest with you.
No.
I think so.
The, that the Portage Partners process was consolidated a bit, but was still very intensive and very detailed and very same price point. And the Big River was similarly not that different a change, although recommending that, maybe that the, prior to, you know, the kickoff of the process, the council and the mediator, moderator I should say, sorry, too much negotiations.
Let's not skip to that stuff yet.
Will can sit down and, and try to determine who you want contracted, contacted closely, you know, who, who really are the stakeholders. Instead of giving you a sheet of paper and doing this, trying to, an hour or two to knock out who you really want us to, to, to contact and touch. And the attractiveness of his proposal still is the timeframe.
Right.
And-
Agreed with that. And price point.
And the price point, to be quite honest with you, so. And I'll be happy to listen or ask, answer questions if you have those.
Questions or feedback?
I was just going to add that, just some feedback, that him, when he added the two-hour work session, I felt a lot better about his. I felt-
Agreed.
Yeah. And the other one, as thorough and wonderful as it sounds, I just don't think that the timeline fits well. And I, and the, again, talking about summer and people being available in the summer, that's a hard, it's a hard one.
Thoughts?
I think Patrick summed it up correctly. I don't think much changed on either of these. I think the one thing I did like about Portage is they had some metrics moving forward. I say that though, not knowing what staff currently does for metrics and how we measure how we're doing. So I say that with a little bit of a grain of salt. They may have a fine program already going on when you finally get it down to that level. So I'm not necessarily tied to the, having to have the metrics. We are not a huge organization staff-wise. I think there's-
Fifty-three, I believe, total.
Half of the trip police officers, right?
Right.
Well, you know, it's, it's not a huge depth. We're trying to go six levels down in an organization and have everyone get the same message. So I'm, I'm fine with the shorter, quicker proposal in that regard.
Yeah. And I think we can deal with the metrics, right, as a team and as a administration. I think we can deal with the metrics.
Yeah, I, I think it just fits our city better.
Yeah.
But, let me-
I took a look again at all of the materials over the weekend and came back to this Village of St. Anthony example. It was included as part of the Big River Plan. And in particular, this sheet with the, you know, vision and strategy on the top, strategic initiatives and individual work plans that follow out of each strategic initiative. And if that process resulted in this type of a document, that's what I'm looking for. We can get to these level of action steps in a collaborative process that just gave me some confidence that this, this is heading down a path that is looking for the outcome I'm looking for. And I think a lot of what council has said in these past discussions. And then the icing on the cake was the timeline, that it's a condensed process, robust. We should, you know, all, this is going to take some calendar time of all of us to get this done. But I, I think there's a pathway to get there that I was appreciated. And so this, coupled with the additional information that came from the package, I would like to see us be ready to put this on the agenda next week for an approval with the Big River Plan. That would be my recommendation, but wanna-
I agree.
It's a work session for a reason, so. Cross any i's, dot any t's or feedback, things we'd like to see modified before we put it on the agenda again. That's what tonight's for.
And I just, I think we need to be clear that the St. Anthony Village Plan was actually developed by St. Anthony Village. It's the finished product was.
Yep, agreed.
Yeah. So if this is an expectation from Big River, this is not what we're going to land with. We can land with a document like this as long as we prepare.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Any other items before we, would see this on the agenda? I said Monday. Our next meeting is actually on Tuesday because of the holiday. Okay. Last, is that, I'm just making sure I'm not missing anybody's nodding head. All right. We have other, an other item on the agenda. Any other items anyone would like to bring up? It's workshop time. This is our time to get those items finished. It's also a beautiful evening and so I would also entertain a motion to adjourn if that were council's preference.
I just want to wish everybody a great Memorial Weekend and be safe out there. Maybe it won't snow. But I'm not going to guarantee that. And, yep, so everybody have a great weekend and I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we're adjourned. Have a safe weekend, everybody.